Okay. Good evening, Town of Wareham. I am calling the Board of Selectmen's meeting of May 18th, 2021 to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Four selectmen is present. Peter Titlebaum is not with us this evening. Town Council and Town Administrator also present.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation.
Under God.
God.
Indivisible, liberate, justice.
Whose dog is that?
That's mine. My dogs.
Uh huh, okay.
Naturally.
Before we go into announcements, I'm going to make a couple of things. Just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to the office staff. And for the past year in the Selectmen's Office, they did a terrific job. And I appreciate all of the work that Mr. Titlebaum put into being the Chair. It's a it's a big job. I'm going to be running the meetings basically the same way that he did. If you choose to speak, you need to come through the Chair. I will, under citizens' comments, recognize people. But in order for me to recognize you, you're going to have to raise your hand and I'm going to have to let you or have WCTV let you into the meeting. I think that the past year has been a very hard one for everyone. And the level of professionalism that the employees of the town have shown to the public has been really extraordinary. And I want to thank all of them. Particularly the people that we work closely with in the Selectmen's Office, but as just everybody in the town. One of the things that I'm going to ask tonight later on is that each of us come up with some goals that we would like to see addressed this year. We'll be talking about those next week. Three to five, no more than five, preferably the three, so that we actually can get a handle on, you know, getting some stuff done. I appreciate the fact that we are a board. That we are one board, we are five members. But we are one board who are serving the betterment of the community. And I just want to make sure that you understand that I am well aware of that. I intend to be a facilitator. And again, run the meeting as best I can, and I've done it before. But I do want to make sure that everyone understands that we're not going to be getting back and forths unless it comes through me. And because I was a school teacher, I can control that pretty well. So, thank you very much. We'll go to announcements. Jim, do you have any?
No, no announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any?
No, nothing today.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Yeah, I have a few, if you can imagine.
No, go ahead.
Wareham Council on Aging continues to offer free lunches on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Please call the council the week before you want to take advantage of this offer. Pickup for meals has been changed to the rear of the Town Hall. Coffee and conversation takes place each Tuesday from nine to 10 at the rear of the Multi-Service Center. Outdoor exercises every Tuesday at 1:00 PM in the library courtyard. There is also chair yoga every Thursday at 2:00 in front of the library. Obviously, both of these happenings are weather permitting. Their DECA is holding a tailgate auction fundraiser Wednesday, May 23rd, from 1:00 to 3:30 in the high school parking lot. More information can be found through the high school website. Go for a walk on Onset Beach while reading a story at the at a series of Story Walk events. The Onset Bay Center and the Wareham Coordinance uh, she acts, or Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Council are hosting a series of Story Walks this spring. The Story Walk is a guided walk with laminated pages from children's books for families to read together along the way. The Story Walk will be up from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on one Saturday each month. In case of rain, the event will be held the following day. That'd be a Sunday, obviously. Boats on the Bay is the featured book for the June 12th schedule. No prior registration is required for these events. For more information, go to www.onsetbaycenter.org or email Garofoli, G-A-R-O-F-O-L-I, at savebuzzardsbay.org. I got more. Don't leave. Nobody go home. Free food for children continues at Gleeson Family Y every Tuesday and Friday from 3:30 to 5:30. Food distribution will also be at Brandy Hill Apartments from 12:00 to 2:00. No ID is required. Please take advantage of the program. Staples will laminate your COVID registration card for you for free. And it sounds like you might want to have it because you might need it coming up pretty soon. The Wareham Free Library is now open from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Saturday. Masks must be worn and social distancing is required. Bring your own earphones. And the library is unable to accept any more donations of books at this moment. They say, "Thank you very much." For those who do not want to enter the library, you still have curbside pickup. When you call, you will be given a five-minute pickup window. Please park in front of the main door and open either your trunk or your rear door or passenger-side window so that you continue, you will continue with the contact-free pickup. The library is holding its May book sale on the following day and time. Thursday and Friday, May 20th, '21. From 9:30 to 4:30 on Saturday, the 22nd, the same the sale will be from 9:30 to 2:00. Please bring your own bags. The sale is being held inside the conference room and masks must be worn. And that's what we have today.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to citizens' comments. And before we go there, I'm going to make a a statement. If you are a person who is currently suing the town or you have signed up as an appellant and your attorney has advised the town that the, we will probably end up in litigation, I will not allow you to speak. If you are not a citizen, I will not allow you to speak. So those are just the rules.
One thing. Sorry. I thought maybe we would get from the veterans, the notification for Memorial Day celebration. Hopefully, we'll get it next week on Tuesday.
Do you have the details? Because you can give them to us right now.
I don't have it with me. I know there's a list of all the different locations that.
I, you know, I do, I, I don't have it, but I will make sure we have it next week.
Thank you. I know, I know they sent it to us. Sorry about that.
There's a whole list of places. I did see it. They came through our emails. I don't know if everybody got it, but it came through our emails. And I'll make sure I put that in next week's announcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see Kat Garofoli. And would you please bring her in to let her in to speak? Mr. White? Hello, Catherine. How are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Let me start my video. Thank you for having me on the meeting again this week. Just a couple of things. The Onset Bay Center is really excited. We're, as I mentioned before, getting ready for a full summer of programs. Most recently, I've been focusing a lot on our adult programs. And so be on the lookout for opening registration for our Learn to Row, our yoga and kayak program that we're calling Poses and Paddles with Ebb and Flow Wellness, and our weekly series of kayak tours and stand-up paddleboard tours that we're offering for free. As you probably are all aware, the closure of the Boys and Girls Club has really impacted the amount of kids that we've been able to serve on a weekly basis. I'm really happy to let everyone know that we're diligently working with the onset kids block group to provide temporary enrichment programs two afternoons a week while they're up there at the Bridge Church. I'm also really excited to announce that the Onset Bay Center is offering the families of the Boys and Girls Club that are affected by this closure, free half-day programs all through the summer. So what we're offering are these weekly programs that'll run from 1:00 to 4:00, completely at no cost to these families, so that the kids can get outside with us. We are their familiar faces. They've, a number of the children that have been participating in the club, we've really forged a great relationship with. And so I'm thrilled to be offering this additional temporary solution for them. And really looking forward to being part of the long-term permanent solution to the families that have been displaced, you know, trying to make sure that we're a part of that conversation so that we can make sure that the kids can get down to the bathhouse with us and that we will get them outside and exploring and in a real positive way. So I did just want to let the Board of Selectmen know, as well as anybody that's watching this meeting tonight, that if you are a family displaced from the Boys and Girls Club, please reach out to me. You can reach me at Garofoli@savebuzzardsbay.org. I'm going to spell that. You can also call me at 508-999-6363, extension 227. And I hope that at least this, this one little temporary care option that we're giving them will be a bright spot for for families that otherwise are struggling to find care this summer.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Garofoli? Mr. Tropiano?
No, I don't have any questions for her, but just when you finish, I have, I've got the stuff on the veterans' deck.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you very much for stepping up. A lot of people have stepped up to help, you know, fill the void and, and you know, we are a seaside community and we, we really should be using the things that we have in, you know, in abundance, which is the right, being right next to the ocean and, and all of the lessons that we can learn from that.
Absolutely. And it's been a real honor to, to be a part of that conversation. There have just been so many people that care so much about how this is impacting the kids. And so, you know, making sure that we continue to, to foster that conversation because it, it, you know, you never know what will happen moving forward in the future on a number of different programs. And so it's the, the sense of community surrounding this loss has really made it very worthwhile. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of the night.
Thank you. I am going to recognize Dee Jepson, who I'm presuming is Dawn. So it's Dee Jepson, Mr. White. Good evening. You are muted, and I'm presuming it's Dawn.
Unmuted, okay.
You're, now you're all set. Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. First off.
Can you?
Yes, it is. It's me, Don, Don Jepson.
Thank you.
And I am using the connection that my spouse has put through, who is Dee Jepson. First off, I'd like to congratulate you on becoming the, or maybe I should say commiserations are on being the new chairman for the Selectmen. And I salute you for your your quest and your passion for trying to get information to make informed decisions. And I really appreciate the fact that you are as conscientious and care about the citizens of Wareham, much like I do as well. So anyway, congratulations to you. And I would just add a couple of things I'd like to mention. One is, a number of years ago, I brought up, I brought it up. And I think that was when Mary, Bruce, now Mary Backy, or Mackey was on the board, and I suggested that maybe the Selectmen should be named the Select Board. And just to let you know, I saw that in the paper, meaning Sipican, that Marion and Matta Poysett has now elected that same topic or subject of calling it Select Board. So I think that's something that should be, be relooked at again. The other thing that I saw in the paper was that Sandwich has now put a ban effective 12/31 of this year on disposable, one-use disposable water bottles, which I thought was interesting. So I passed that along. Another thing I'd like to mention is that the Maintenance Department and Derek Sullivan should be congratulated for the job that they have done. I am not one who's gets their trash picked up. I go to the dump and transfer station. I have to say the attitude on everybody and everything has run smoothly. I know there's been some criticisms on other people. But anyway, I just wanted to pass along my compliments to them. And also, you said that you're a former school teacher. I live with a former school teacher, and I know what that teacher look is, and I know you will do a great job of controlling the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jepson. Ms. Papalardo, I'm not going to recognize you as you are party to an appeal against the town where the appellant's attorney has stated that the matter will, will end up in litigation. Therefore, according to our practice, the Board of Selectmen, we are prevented from hearing from you. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, so we will go to boards' comments. Jim?
Yes. That was interesting, that last one with Kathy Papalotto. I didn't know that she had filed anything against the town. I don't know if I saw that.
She's on a list of, she's on a list of 10 represented by somebody else. And the list, I think, was forwarded to all of us.
Well, would you, someone forward that to me?
Certainly. Yep.
Yeah, that would be nice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
No, not today.
Mr. Tropiano?
Okay, so first, let me tell you about the the Memorial Day Ceremony. The annual Memorial Day Commemorative will take place on Monday, May 31st, 2021, and follow the same schedule as last year. The program will be conducted solely by the Veterans Council with colored guides from the Wareham High School Junior ROTC and the Wareham Militia. The program will be repeated at each of the six locations. And the, all current, oh, by the way, all COVID requirements will be in place. And they're going to go at 8:30 to the Town Green, 9 o'clock to the Center Cemetery, 9:30 to St. Patrick's Cemetery, 10 to Agawam Cemetery, 10:30 to Dudley Brown Square, and 11 to the Town Hall. And so I just wanted you to get that. Now, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, this is coming to a close. They're going to, on the 29th, basically get rid of all of the requirements for COVID. So if you're not vaccinated, they are going to keep in place a thing that says, "Listen, do me a favor and try to keep a mask on to protect yourself." Because as you well know, all of us who are vaccinated are probably not really have to worry much. But there are still some out there that have not gotten the vaccine for one reason or another, and it could be problematic. The other thing I want to mention is we need to talk a little bit that there are a lot of places, schools and other things, have been putting in ventilation systems to allow air to go through. For our commercial buildings are spending a lot of money to continue with that, to hopefully, in case something should arise in the future. And we need to keep doing that. We got to make sure they keep doing that. There is a little problem, however, because the stretch code and the ventilation that you need to push air through a commercial building do not coincide. In fact, you cannot follow the stretch code 100% and make that work. It's impossible. Because you need to have ventilation. You need to have air, makeup air coming in from the outside. You can't just recirculate the air. And as you well know, the stretch code wants to keep the building as tight as possible and, you know, be as energy efficient as possible. So I'm hoping that somebody's listening out there and they will do something to sort of fix the problem between the two so that, you know, we don't put our, our inspection services in a bad position. Because they could very well put them in a bad position where they'd have to go out and say, "Well, you're not meeting the stretch code." And they'd say, "Well, no, but we're putting in this, this high-flow system in order to make sure that we have good ventilation, so that if anything ever develops again, we, we have some protection within the building." So that's one of the problems. We, we were talking about it today, a bunch of us, a couple of engineers and myself and some people from Berkeley College and so on. We had a long conversation about this. And we're trying to figure out how we can continue to do what we need to do and still meet the code. So it's problematic, and we'll see how it's going to happen. But don't stop. Keep moving forward. You know, you never know when, you know, hopefully, it won't be another 100 years before something comes around that, you know, is anything like this. Or there won't be any backlash as a result of the dropping of all the standards on the 29th. Please try to protect yourself if you're not vaccinated. And if you're not, please go get vaccinated. You can walk in now. Walk in, say, "Okay, here I am." Put your arm up. They'll give you the vaccine. They'll tell you to come back when you need to come back, and you're all set. So let's try to finish this thing up and get 100% and move forward. Thank you.
The only comment that I have is that I would remind you all that June 12th of this year at 11 o'clock at the Deacon's School, we are having our town meeting, our annual town meeting and our spring special within it. Okay, let's move on to appointments, reappointments, and interviews.
Okay. All right, we have three, and they're all for the same committee. And so why don't I just, I'm just going to I'm going to read them all together, so to speak, because there's really no reason to read them individually. They're all basically the same. I got Richard Swenson of Nine Churchill Avenue, Wareham. Judith Whiteside, 253 Great Neck. Oh, do you want to abstain from this? So you want me to read that separate? You don't need to.
No, that's fine. But the dates for them need, they're different dates, Mr. Tropiano.
Oh, you're absolutely right. There's two that are the same and one different.
Yes, sir.
So I will read the two together and then the other one separate.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's do Richard Swenson first. He, I wish to appoint him as a member of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
Is?
That's my motion.
Okay, on the agenda, it says 2022.
Says 2024 on the appointment.
Okay.
And you're, actually, you two are 2022.
That's correct, because the term expires with the Selectmen's term. Do I have a second to the motion to appoint Mr. Swenson? For a term to expire 2024?
Three years.
Oh, a second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Present.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Whiteside, yes. So it is 31, 301. Thank you. May I have a second?
Next up, I have Peter Titlebaum, 30 Oak Street, Wareham. And Judith Whiteside, 253 Great Neck Road, Wareham, Mass. And there, I wish to make them appointed to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority to a term to expire no later than April 30th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano with a second by Mr. Slaven. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Present.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Whiteside, yes, 301. Thank you. We'll move on to licenses and permits now.
Okay, hold on one second because I want to get something came to me a little bit ago. So I want to make sure that I get the right thing here. There was a change, a little bit of a change, so I want to get it. Okay. All right, so I'm going to do the Church of the Good Shepherd and Gateway Golden Pond first. So I move that we approve the license, license, secondhand dealer license renewal for the Church of the Good Shepherd and the Golden Pond. What is it? What do they call themselves? It doesn't say here, but on Main Street, the Golden Pond.
Gateway Golden Pond.
Gateway Golden Pond, yeah, okay. For, for the renewal for this year. Now, they are 100%. They've got everything in place. They're missing, they weren't missing anything. Their inspectional services came through. So I want to make them with no restrictions.
And they, those licenses will expire on April 30th, 2022?
Correct, next year, yes.
Thank you. May I have a second to the motion? Motion made by Mr. Tropiano, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So.
So now, the rest of these are all subject to inspectional services because they haven't got around all of them yet, okay? So I move that we approve the renewal of the secondhand dealer licenses to expire April 30th, 2022 for the following places. The First Congressional Church, Leving Givens Ave. The Home Depot, 2994 Cranberry Highway. Omega Rain Inc., Cranberry Flea Market, 3065 Cranberry Highway. South Coast Sport Partners, Two Tyler Ave, Wareham. Used Tire Warehouse Inc., Fourth Thatchel Lane, Wareham. Pawn Brokers.
You're going to have to do that one separately.
Sorry, I do, yes.
And could you restate it's the First Congregational Church, not the First Congressional Church?
Oh, did I say that right? Wrong? I apologize. Okay, the First Congressional Church.
Congregational. You did it again. May I have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
I did it twice.
You did.
No charge.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Whiteside, yes. So it is 400. Thank you. It is not the fault of anyone who has put their applications in. Unfortunately, sometimes all of the inspections have not been done, but the office is very good about following up and making sure that the license is not handed out to the to the individual or to the company without those inspections being signed off.
All right, so next is the Pawn Broker License Renewal for Gateway Golden Pond, 290 Main Street, Wareham, to expire April 30th, 2022. And I move that we approve it. By the way, he has his inspections in place.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote then. Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 400. Thank you. Town business, COVID-19 update, Mr. Sullivan? We can't hear you very well.
Well, there's nothing to hear.
So there's nothing to hear?
Nothing to hear? Okay. Then we will move on. Item B, which is to accept some donations. Mr. Tropiano?
I have one to accept. It's from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Inc. It says, "On behalf of the Town of Wareham, we are pleased to accept the $240 donation to Wareham Free Library for Needs for the Spiny Memorial Branch by Ann Campbell, by her friends and loved ones. We are also pleased to accept $1,500 donation for the operating expenses to the Spiny Memorial Library."
So that's your motion to accept both of those?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr.'s motion made by Tropiano, seconded by Slaven. Any further discussion? The generous donation was in memory of Mrs. Campbell that Mr. Slaven brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago. I am going to call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano? Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you very much for those generous donations. We now have a quarterly review of the constable remittance form. This is something that Mr. Muniz um brought to our attention a while ago. Um and Mr. Muniz, do you want to speak about it?
Um, I don't know if I'm sideways. Let me see.
Yeah, you are.
Oh, what I have to turn it around because the way it's brought put into the system, but
Okay.
um I I can do this. I can do it, believe me.
Thank you.
Um, no, I think it's great. Um I think we've seen a a reduction in the number. I think I see a couple others that um unless things change within between now and the time we do the reappointments, would not be reappointed and it's getting down to a manageable number and the costs for administrations being covered now being covered by the the cost collected. So I think it's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Muniz?
No, just thanks, Jim, for stepping up on this one.
Oh, tha- thanks for our assistance in the office. I just kind of created the mess and they put it together and made it look like something special. Thank you.
No, thank you. So I don't think we need to do anything. We don't need to accept it or anything. It's just uh we will be bringing it back on a quarterly basis as their reports are required by our uh setup. So thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the discussion and possible vote of assignments or reassignments of liaisons. Before we do that, we might want to put it off until next week um with Mr. T- Titlebaum here. I went back and asked um when liaisons actually started, because I I didn't remember sort of not having them. And I wanted to know really why they had been um created. What is the purpose of a liaison? And when they were created, they were created way, way back um by the board, because a lot of people were calling the then chairman and she decided that each one of the members of the board could have, you know, a closer relationship with certain boards or committees as they chose and that the those boards and committees could work closely with, for instance, Mr. Muniz with um uh conservation or something like that, so that any news that needed to be brought forward would be brought forward through the liaison. Um so that's just the history of it. I don't know. Do you guys want to put it off a week or do you want to?
You should be here for this.
Okay, do you have, anybody have a problem with putting that off?
No.
Mr. Muniz?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's, next is a request to place signs on town property from the Wareham Public Schools Art Department?
Yep, it says, uh, we are creating ninety lawn signs that include the artwork of approximately two hundred and fifty students at the Minnetonka Forest Elementary in the Wareham Middle School. We would like permission to put the signs along the Viking Drive on June seventh to the nineteenth, the ninth, sorry. Um onset Ave across from Glen Cove Hotel on June tenth and eleventh and Main Street in front of Deacon's School on June fourteenth and fifteenth. Signs will be placed three to five feet apart from each other unless there are other requirements.
That was your motion?
Yep.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any further discussion or any questions? I think it's a great idea to have the students' work shown um in this way. This is fabulous. I will call for a vote now on the motion and this uh Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Miss Whiteside, yes. Thank you. And next, we have some hirings, Mr. Tropiano?
Yes, we do. I uh would make a motion to approve the conditional offers of employment to Greg Gigan and Andrew Floyd for seasonal uh duty harbor master positions.
Um I'm going to correct you slightly. I think it's Gregory Gigan and and Andrew Florrie, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I am. I'm I'm looking at. Yeah, I am. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions on the motion and the hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Present.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Three zero one. Thank you. Uh continued discussion and vote to recommend articles for the twenty twenty-one Annual Spring Town Meeting. I think we had just one more to do, am I right?
Um, we have the budget transfers, which we have not done yet. Uh the amendment to the SOLA bylaw, if we want to, and the petition to local initiative program uh number twenty-six.
Okay, um the number, Article ten, we were waiting for a dollar amount on Wareham Pollution Control Facility. Mr. Sullivan, we don't have that, or do we?
Well, we've already okayed it. I've got the sheet sheet in front of me.
Was that okay to put it on? I don't know if you.
No, we recommended to put it on. We haven't voted to recommend it.
Nope. The recommendation was five zero zero according to the sheet.
To put on the warrant, but not I'm looking at the one I just got from her today.
I got it right here. And it says, it says the first column is on the warrant. The second column is the represent rep uh recommendation. And if you come across from number ten, it says five zero zero. On the warrant was four zero one. And this is, uh she just gave me this. I went in the office today, yesterday, actually.
All right, so that one's all set?
Yeah, according to her it was. She must have got it off the tape.
Okay, um.
That's why I read the ones, I read the only ones that haven't been done yet. Twenty-five, twenty-six, seventeen.
What? No, we did twenty-five last week.
Thank you.
Well, it's not here. It says not, it wasn't, it wasn't here at all. That was a, we call it petition for the name.
That was a petition. We did that last week, I believe. Am I correct, Ms. Muniz?
I thought we did too, but uh it's not here.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
I made the motion as a matter of fact.
That's what I thought. Thank you, sir.
I have left is twenty-six, one and seventeen.
Okay, so twenty-six would be the local initiative on the sole, no? That would be the um Ms. Ekstrom's.
Correct. And the other one is the SOLA bylaws seventeen and the budget transfers is one.
Okay.
And then we don't, we didn't have any budget transfers unless Derek has some, then he wants it still.
No, we didn't.
Well, I brought that forward to you guys.
You did. Yeah, we did that.
Didn't we do the SOLA bylaw too?
Yes, we did. We did that last week.
Well, it's not on the sheet. Everything else is, but it's not on the sheet. So I'm just giving you what's not on the sheet.
No, I I know we did it last week. I think the only one we haven't done is the item twenty-six on the local initiative. And again, I would like to have Mr. Titlebaum weigh in on that as well, if you don't mind, gentlemen. We'll put that off until next week.
Fine.
Is that all right with you, gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yeah, that's, is that the um local initiative for um housing?
Yes, sir.
We talked, we talked about, you know, we could uh someone could make a motion to possibly divide the question on the floor last week and whatnot.
Yeah, I actually asked Madam Moderator whether she would allow a bifurcation and she has not yet responded to me.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just refreshing it in my mind and you did discuss it last week. No, I mean, it's it's a citizen's petition, so it's on there. All we're voting for is whether we're in favor of it or not, right?
Correct. Yes.
So do it next week if you want.
I would prefer to have the five of us present, if you don't mind.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Um, so I believe we're all set on those except for that one article. We do have um a uh item under forty-eight hour business.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Tropiano, could you bring that forward, please?
Uh, yes, we have, hold on, let me.
And all of you got a copy of this on, I know that the office sent this to you. It's the triathlon.
Yeah, it's uh for the triathlon for the date of the twelfth, June twelfth. And I don't want one of these, but I don't see it here. Hold on, it must be in this little packet here.
It's a separate item was.
I know, I know, but I don't see it right now. Hold on. It's a big packet, I know that. This is gonna be, it's gonna be in here. Hang on, hang on to your sneaker. I'm working on it. Well, it's not, it's actually not even a second one all by itself. She uh she didn't put it in here, actually. I thought she put it in as a separate one, but it's not here, unfortunately.
What it is is an application for a road use permit for the cycling portion of the um Harvest Triathlon and Onset Triathlon. And I believe that Mr. Richmond, Tim Richmond is here and would probably like to speak to the issue. So, Mr. Why would you let Tim Richmond in?
He can tell us the whole story.
Yes, thank you. Hello, Tim, how are you?
Hi, folks. How we doing? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, very good. It's good to see you all. Uh thanks for having, having me tonight. I appreciate it. Um, so I'll just briefly go through that um the the Harvest Triathlon is uh June twelfth slated for. Uh we're excited and happy to be back and racing in Wareham again. Uh last year, of course, we had a uh layoff due to COVID um with many other activities, but we're excited to bring it back and work with many of the local organizations and groups in town, um who we thank for all their support um as well as police, fire, EMS, Harbor Master, who all uh jump in to help out um throughout the morning. Um so the packet that you all have in front of you is rather robust um due to the nature of of COVID planning and and we've spent the better part of a year getting ready for the opportunity to be uh extra safe and cautious and and make sure everybody uh wore their masks and uh we did uh all the, all the things that the state had asked us to do. And then yesterday, uh you know, the the most recent announcement um has has launched us into uh, you know, a little bit uh different look. Um however, we are still uh planning to be responsible and and give folks plenty of room in the morning, stagger the arrival time, just to to be extra prudent and cautious and safe. Um, so again, today we're here just to to get access to uh the roads, but also discuss if any questions have come up uh based on that application. Um and again, thank you for uh for your support of of this event.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Mr. Muniz, do you have any questions?
No, no, not at all. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Uh, no, Tim and I have already corresponded back and forth. Sandy and I will be working the event, getting the town meeting in time. Thank you so much. We we appreciate that.
Mr. Tropiano?
I'm a little concerned of the fact that it's happens to be town meeting day. And what I'm concerned about is not getting people to show up to town meeting um uh which could be problematic for, well, you laugh, but it's not, it's very serious. Town meeting is a very important thing we we do and we've been pushing it off. And this date is sort of our drop dead date now. And it's very important to what the town does to get that town meeting out of the way. So I'm very concerned about the fact that it could cause us because they could be at your events or whatever and cause us some people not to show up at town meeting. And that could be problematic for for what we, what we try to do at town meeting. Uh so I'm a little concerned. Secondly, um you know, these things don't, I mean, here we're doing this under emergency business. And hypothetically, it's not emergency business. There's nothing emergency about it. We should have known um a month ahead of time about when the event was gonna be so that we could have approved it or moved it around or done forever. Uh, you know, and now we're stuck at the last minute asking to do it on the day of town meeting. And uh I'm not, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I think it's problematic.
Mr. Richmond, could you address when you might be going anywhere near the Deacon's School property, which is where the town meeting will be being held?
Correct, yeah. So um, Mr. Tropiano, I I appreciate your comments and and completely understand. So typically, the triathlon um begins at seven thirty AM. We've requested to move that up to seven. Um so where most of the athletes who cycle through Wareham will be completed by by nine thirty at the very latest. And a lot of the finishers, yeah, so a lot of the finishers will in fact be done um by eight thirty-nine, because we have like two distances that that kind of cycle and complete the race. Um but most of the, a majority of the finishers should be done between eight thirty and nine, be able to go home, grab a shower and get to town meeting. Um and 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 honestly, I I was, you know, concerned about it when it first came up and I I saw that there could be a conflict and made sure we spoke about it with um uh the police chief um and and, you know, addressed those concerns.
Well, the police chief doesn't control town meeting. It's the selectmen that do that. Uh I just want to say, okay, I, as long as they're done by nine thirty, I think it works out okay. And and I think it'll work. However, I want, in the future, I want to have more time uh in order for these dates, in case we say to you, no, you can't have that date, uh can you pick another one? Because I don't want to put you under the gun when all of a sudden we said no, and then you're out trying to find a date uh and you've already advertised or, you know, got people doing whatever. We don't want that to happen. So you need to give us more leeway on this, uh because th- these kind of things, you know, are, there's things that are going on all the time that are important. Could have been another race going on and you wouldn't have known uh without getting it to us, you know what I'm saying? So.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
Understood.
Mr. Tropiano?
Thank you.
Um actually, I chose to put it under, I'll let you.
No, no, I know that.
Um, I chose to put it on under forty-eight hours because I believed that it, we should have a longer um time for letting, letting everyone know that this is sort of a conflicting time thing. Mr. Sullivan, you had something to say? I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I just want to assure Mr. Tropia, it's like when Tropiano, that I I would not be running the triathlon this year, so you don't have to worry.
Oh. But you had your Superman, you had your Superman costume all picked out.
Been a lot of years since I've done anything near there.
That's good. I like it.
The other thing that I can tell you is that um normally the uh Wareham Tigers use the Deacon's Fields for practice on Saturdays and they are not going to be doing that on the eleventh, on the twelfth. They will be having their games on the thirteenth, which is when they usually hit their games. So people are trying to move around and stay out of everybody's way and I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
Nope, I just.
Then I will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the use of town roads for the triathlon.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano with a second by Mr. Muniz. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
He said yes, but it's.
You said yes, but you.
I did see that. I can read lips, so.
I can too. Mr. Slaven, just hold your fingers up or something.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And Miss Whiteside, yes. Thank you very much, um, Mr. Richmond. Oh, you've got the sign-offs of everybody else, um so I think you're all set to keep going. Thank you.
All right, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so just just going back with us on the COVID numbers, we've had sixteen new cases, eight probable. Uh and just sort of a roundup, since March two thousand twenty twenty, it, the total number have been one thousand seven hundred twenty-four and we've had sixty-eight deaths during that time. So, uh but good, good, that's sort of leaning in today. We had, uh, we had some pretty great events going on. I don't know if you saw that the uh South Coast Mobile Unit was uh down on Onset Pier doing the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And over at the Multi Service Center today, walk-in for the Moderna vaccine, which I actually walked over and uh got my first shot today. The the uh I obviously uh didn't get it earlier. I was waiting till it it opened up and then everything going on with Ashley, you know, sort of put that on the back burner, but that's uh it was great just to be able to walk over and it was, it was really easy and the the uh people there were fantastic. It was really, it was a good experience. So, you know, it's uh sat you down for fifteen minutes and then on your way, so.
Good. Thank you.
Two other items today, uh I I think you, we've been going. I, I think we've been going over this for a while. Over at the Tremont Mill Pond Dam, I don't know if everybody remembers, that used to be an energy generation facility based off of, from the water. So we still have a fork license with that. And it's, it's potentially, you know, we could be losing that for non-activity. So we put out an RFP and some other, some other information for an energy, if you, energy generation facility, almost a whole campus on that site, if you will. And I've signed up for a feasibility study with literal power systems, or littoral power systems, I guess you should, you should say. It's no cost to the town. It's an MOA engagement with them. And what they're trying to see is if it's actually feasible to, between the, what you can get in tax credits, et cetera, to create an energy generation facility at that location, including fixing the, that dam as well and the gates. So I'm happy to say that we've engaged with them on the MOA. Let's, could be a little while before we see something out of it, but it's the start.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the next item is, as you know, there's a BOs policy to go before the Board of Selectmen before applying for CPC funds from any, for any, I guess, municipal facilities, if you will. And what I'm asking is the Board of Selectmen to vote in favor of $250,000 to, to be able to go to the CPC for the whole town meeting and $250,000 to rehab or completely redo the Swiss Beach Playground, you know, or Conway Playground. I don't know, at least a couple of you know, Kristi Padolano from the Swiss Beach Summer Resin has been doing a tremendous job getting all this information together. There have been proposals substantially higher than that, but in looking at, at the monies, I think Lukey Playground was 175,000. Then the next one was Shangri-La, 220,000. And just giving with some of the costs, it makes sense for about 250,000. And I'm guessing the Swiss Beach community is going to get behind that as well and help and donate more. So I'd like to see the Board of Selectmen's information, or at least, let me, get me a, a polling of the board, maybe official vote confirmation next week, but just so I can apply to CPC. Their deadline is what the.
June 2nd?
What's that?
Is it June 2nd?
Yeah, I think coming up ASAP, so.
Second Monday in June.
Second Monday, sorry.
Thank you.
Sandy knows how I feel about the six months of that.
Are there any questions from the board?
Nope.
Mr. Muniz? Do you, you worked on this, didn't you?
I just tried to help facilitate and, you know, you can ask for what you want, and CPC decides what they feel is reasonable. So, and I know Mr. Sullivan has been in contact with Ms. Padolano. And so if he's willing to put that forward, I would support him on it.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
No issue.
Mr. Tropiano?
Nope.
Nope, no issue or no, no?
No, no issue. I have no problem with it. I mean, I, I give him permission as far as I'm concerned.
I, I agree. I think it's a great project. And I really want to thank Ms. Papalano.
Padolano.
Papalano, for the work that she put into it, because it's clear there was an enormous amount of work put into this presentation or into the figures that we were given today. I will get it on the agenda for next week for a real vote, if that's okay with you, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I think that's fantastic. And in the meanwhile, I'll put that together and send it over to the CPC. I believe they'll have no, no qualms while we're waiting.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
No, that's all the news fit to print.
Okay.